This is 10:05, we're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. City Clerk, would you kick us off with taking role and maybe having the microphones turned down just a little bit as well? Thank you.
Yes, we have ISD turning those down. Role call, Councilmember Esparza.
Present.
Councilmember Bredefield.
Here.
Councilmember Chavez.
Here.
Councilmember Arias.
Present.
Councilmember Carbasi.
Here.
Vice President Perea.
Present.
And Council President Maxwell.
Present. All right, it looks like we have everybody here. City Clerk, are there any changes to today's agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda, but I would like to make an announcement that we do have Spanish, Mong, and Punjabi available via Zoom, as well as Spanish interpreters in person, and they're going to come up right now and do a quick introduction.
All right, thank you. I take it over to my colleagues at this time. Do any of my council colleagues have any changes they'd like to make to the agenda at this time? We'll start in numerical order with Councilmember Carbasi. Arias, Chavez, Bredefield, Esparza, Perea. Motion to approve. A motion to approve in a second from Perea. Is there any opposition? Seeing none, passes 7-0. All right, we're going to go to the public comment portion of today's agenda. For special meetings, we don't do unscheduled communication. We'll have opportunity to discuss any of the items listed on today's agenda, including the CFD and the mayor's budget. We're going to start with folks who are here in the chambers today. We'll allow three minutes per speaker, and after we finish the chamber, we'll go to Zoom. We're going to start off with Fernando Elizondo. Good morning. You slept in last week.
I went to see the governor.
Okay.
Had bigger fish to fry. Anyway, peace be with you. Today's my agenda, which is not a skewed agenda. I bring it out in the open to you. It's about the Constitution of the United States of California. We have freedom of speech. Freedom of speech does not mean two, three minutes, or whatever you guys decide, okay? And I'm taking this up to the Attorney General. So you can either change it on your own, or you have misconduct in the chamber here. So let's work together, keep it here. We come here because we have issues. You didn't invite us, okay? Because we don't have big dollars for you guys to get big dividends. This is all about. Fresno has become a big facade for corruption. And the city council is behind it because the puppet masters. You guys have become the puppets, okay? You're not doing what your free will, what you know is right. You're doing what the puppet masters with big dollars. See, you guys got a, what do you call it? Some money behind closed doors, okay? By Jerry Dyer. That's considered a bribe. You should not take that money, even if it's in your salary. Because now he bought you out to go along with him. See? Another thing we have on the agenda is you guys saved by the bell. But anyway, these things don't work. I turned it off. Okay. The agenda that you do behind closed door is illegal. You have to have an agenda for public all the time. We don't, you aren't part-time workers, you're full-time workers, okay? And a lot of you know that you don't get to say what you really feel, what you really think. Maybe Gary Benefield does, but I know the rest of you don't. How you been behaving yourself lately? I didn't think so. No surprise to me. I have a good therapist. He's willing to do a pro bono for you. But anyway, that's not part of the agenda. Yeah, I'm kidding, right? But anyway, the serious matter is, we want justice. We want for you guys to respect us and not being arrogant, okay? God does not like arrogance, all right? You know, a lot of you changed since you got new suits or whatever. It's not right. When you cut me off like that, that's rude. I thank you for listening, but the Constitution is going to...
Thank you for your time, Mr. Elizondo. I appreciate you being here today. Next in the chambers, we have Ruben E. Mr. Elizondo, thank you very much. Ruben E, good morning.
All right, hello, good morning. Council President and City Council, my name is Ruben E, and I'm a policy advocate with Fresno Barrios Nidos. And I just wanted to say I'm excited for the budget presentation and the budget hearings. I think this is my third year participating in the budget. And I just want to remind everybody that the budget is a moral document, and it lets us know who we value and what we prioritize. And let's not forget those who have been left behind historically. And still now, we're still just coming out of a pandemic, so we still need a lot of investment to help us get where we need to be as a society, as a city. I also want to point out that there has been a lot of youth homelessness in Fresno and with the pandemic. And the stay-in-place orders, it has been a lot harder to detect youth homelessness. It's a lot more invisible.
Young leader.
What was that? Oh, okay. So yeah, there's a lot of youth homelessness. It's much more invisible. And without strong infrastructure in the city, like robust youth resiliency centers, where youth can maybe just drop in and be seen, and we can work with our youth would be great. And I want this council to really consider that and use this money in an equitable way. Let's not continue pouring in the same failed things that we have. Let's try something new. And I look forward to bringing up ideas to this council on how we can do that, working on the ground with young people, young adults who are struggling, kind of covering, filling in the gaps, seeing where there is needed, much-needed investment. So I just want to put that at the forefront as we begin this budget presentation. Let's not forget those who have been left behind, young people, elderly, the homeless. So I just want to put that lens on before we really dive in. And just want to say that I'm glad to participate. So with that, thank you.
Thank you for your time, Ruben. Next in the chambers, we have Brandy Anne.
Thank you very much for your time. I reiterate what Ruben says about the speed and moral document and your serving our community, and ask that that be considered above any special interest, that you put yourself in the shoes of those you're serving, put yourself in the place of tenants, not landlords. That you put yourself in the place of the experience and think about the experience of if you were unhoused and have a job or can't have a job but want housing. Since you aren't, please listen closely. We've been speaking all year long and will be speaking. And ask that you look for sustainable solutions to the budget and ensure that we're funding. And that those have been presented, they will be presented by community members, like tenant protections, lease rent control. I'm glad for that there is funding for warming and cooling centers. That was a result of listening to the community. I hope alternate and 911 response fulfills the needs that the community is asking for, as well as affordable housing. In the meantime, for unhoused, we need you to partner with them for creative solutions. We need things like safe camps because even as you're getting the housing and the shelters, some shelters are closing, some are opening, we're getting housing, but there are still people who've been waiting to get somewhere, and then they've been displaced by the heart team, which is, this addresses unsustainable work of the heart team. While the mayor's office focuses on the small percentage that's assisting getting services, the majority is going to displacement. And we've told you, this is actually impeding people getting housing, as we have heard from countless people, including a man that came before you, whose backpack, the heart team, refused to let him keep that had documents he needed for a rental he had just secured, and he lost that rental because of, the heart team basically tells, many of the heart team tells people, they basically only keep in their hands. We need to partner, we need to do things that may not be popular, like the safe camps, but be creative and listen to the community. Because while so much, 10 million went to the heart police alone last year, 100 million goes to police in general. And that, we need to look at the issues and support the sustainable issues of the sustainable solutions that your community is bringing forward. Also ensure that you are listening because as last year, we've brought people brought up about things like the security at the shelters being unfair. And then a report showed that that was true. Listening matters. There are other things that we are telling and ask that during this period that you listen, that we get focused on, again, on tenant protections and on other needs to supplement the efforts that are being done regarding getting more affordable housing and other services. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brandy. And that'll conclude the Anne Chamber comments and remarks. City Clerk, do we have anybody queued up on Zoom to speak?
Yes, first we have Nisha.
Hi, good morning. It's Nishay Balahadia from Mighty Community Amity. I have a few comments about the budget and a few questions. Based off of the budget proposal that Mayor Dwyer put together and released about an hour ago, we have a few comments that he made about data, like the decrease in crime in Fresno. And I would like to know where the data is coming from, as we have not seen any of the data that you guys are putting your budget against. And I think it's really important for the public to know where these numbers are and what the data is that you are compiling from. And it's actually quite a big concern as far as stating that there is a decrease in any crime without actually giving the information and the data behind it. We have, in the last year, actually in the last 10 years, y'all have increased Fresno PD's budget by $100 million. You have implemented the heartless team, and they got $10 million last year, while the only teen unhoused sanctuary has closed. We are talking about the unhoused youth. We're talking about pregnant youth. We're talking about foster care youth. And all of these are directly affecting the unhoused population and community in Fresno. And you all are ignoring the concerns. We had one sanctuary, and it was closed. But now you are increasing policing of this community, and you're also giving the heartless team more money in order for them to just disband communities. That is not putting people in your communities first. We have a major problem with affordable housing and access to actual safe shelter. And you are not listening to your community members that are bringing this up to you. The fact that the proposal budget is what it is, and you are still increasing police dollars is absolutely frightening. And yeah, I also would like to talk about who takes cop money because the website has now been re-updated. And every single one of you, aside from Arias, has taken a bunch of cop money, and it is a direct correlation into the increase in budget. I am excited to see what the...
Okay. Next, we have Ashley.
What up, good morning. Happy Thursday, happy budget season to our city council. I understand that everybody wants to feel good about what's happening, that progress is being made, that we're making small but important movements in the right directions. But I want to reiterate a couple of important points that were just raised. We're asking the state for $250 million to help our downtown. We're asking for ongoing investments, and we don't invest in ourselves because our city council does not represent our community, and they represent special interests. Not only do you all prioritize the politics of punishment, but you prioritize greed and glutton. You ignored our community when they rallied for rent control, and you instead rewarded realtors. You all claim to care for youth, but there is no crisis youth shelter in our community. You claim to care for houseless residents, but you allow for their homes to be sold and inaccessible to them. It's almost Pride Month, and everybody's going to talk about how much they support the LGBTQ community when LGBTQ youth are most at risk for homelessness, for human trafficking, for substance use and mental health. And there is nowhere for them to turn at any hour of the day. I think it's disheartening, to say the least, that our city council is so young and supposedly democratic for you all to make in the policy decisions that you're making. I'm sorry that you all have been groomed in the way that you have been, but please find your courage and show up for community.
Thank you, Ashley. Next, we have Camila Rivera.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Camila Rivera. I am the campaigns coordinator with Power California Action and a resident of District 7. This budget season, renters need to be prioritized and tenant protections expanded to address housing, the housing crisis now. Renters make up more than half of all Fresno households. We need rent control in Fresno. Rent control means a rent cap, extended tenant protections, and a rental mediation board for enforcement. Stable housing is safety. Stable housing provides the foundation needed for our children, elders, and families to focus on and improve their mental and physical health. You all represent community, not the special interest groups. It's time to take action now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Lisa Flores.
Good morning, everybody. First off, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. First off, the city needs to get better at their communication style. You don't release a budget an hour before the actual meeting because I really would have liked to see it, because I didn't even know it was released an hour before the meeting, so I could make adequate comments, but I know that I will have opportunities later. But you know, positive outreach meets positive outcomes, Jerry. The city council needs to really start doing an in-depth look at risk analysis because you guys are really piss poor at it. Your youth housing, as other folks have talked about, needs to be funded. Without it, you are at fault for every single child that enters into the jail and the prison industrial complex. You all claim to care for youth, but there is no crisis youth shelter in our community. You claim to care for houseless residents, but you allow for their homes to be sold and inaccessible to them. It's almost Pride Month, and everybody's going to talk about how much they support the LGBTQ community, when LGBTQ youth are most at risk for homelessness, for human trafficking, for substance use and mental health, and there is nowhere for them to turn at any hour of the day. I think it's disheartening, to say the least, that our city council is so young and supposedly democratic, for you all to make in the policy decisions that you're making. I'm sorry that you all have been groomed in the way that you have been, but please find your courage and show up for community.
Thank you, Ashley. Next we have Camila Rivera.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Camila Rivera. I am the campaigns coordinator with Power California Action and a resident of District 7. This budget, this budget season, renters need to be prioritized, and tenant protections expanded to address housing, the housing crisis now. Renters make up more than half of all Fresno households. We need rent control in Fresno. Rent control means a rent cap, extended tenant protections, and a rental mediation board for enforcement. Stable housing is safety. Stable housing provides the foundation needed for our children, elders, and families to focus on and improve their mental and physical health. You all represent community, not the special interest groups. It's time to take action now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Lisa Flores.
Good morning, everybody. First off, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. First off, the city needs to get better at their communication style. You don't release a budget an hour before the actual meeting, because I really would have liked to seen it, because I didn't even know it was released an hour before the meeting, so I could make adequate comments, but I know that I will have opportunities later, but, you know, positive outreach meets positive outcomes, Jerry. The city council needs to really start doing an in-depth look at risk analysis, because you guys are really piss poor at it. Your youth housing, as other folks have talked about, needs to be funded. Without it, you are at fault for every single child that enters into the jail and the prison industrial complex. You become responsible for increased death rates in that community. You are responsible for increasing the number of people in the sex trafficking and drug culture in Fresno. So, that's my quick analysis of your risk analysis there, is that, you know, when you sit down and you start thinking about it, if we cut funding here at the front end of things, how much is it going to cost us at the back end? And you'll see, you'll be saving probably multiples of tens and twenties of the money you've spent if you take care of it and do prevention. You desperately need rent control, because Fresno, as I've been asking for, for three years, needs to stabilize rent for those in greatest need. And those in greatest needs are the ones that are becoming homeless. The final thing I want to talk to you guys about is the budget and how it pertains to constructions and constructions of any projects within the footprint of roading. Roading is not to be used for parking structures. There's land outside of roading, across the street, that can be used for that, especially since roadings only impacted, out of the 365 days that it's open, the most its impact is 14 days. One nonprofit should not have such hold over the historical landscape of roading, that if they want something, they get something and it's just signed off on for 14 days. And that includes, and those 14 days are not all days that are impacted by the zoo. But 14 days out of 365, you need to do a risk analysis, as well as air quality analysis, as well as why do you have exotic animals?
Thank you, Lisa.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Next we have Carla Martinez.
Hi, Carla Martinez with Leadership Council and a resident of District 1. I'm making comments on the mayor's proposed budget. As we continue to reiterate the need to meaningfully engage the public in a transparent, inclusive process for how to spend public dollars. Further, this presentation hasn't been released and has not provided the public enough time to evaluate the mayor's proposed budget, let alone provide feedback that could be included. This is the first time the public is getting to hear about the mayor's plan, and it is not conducive nor quality of one Fresno, if we're not even including people, especially those who have historically been excluded in the first place. Communities have continuously called for accountability of our local governments to begin funding and investing in projects, programs, and plans driven by the people that will allow for equitable growth and access. The city of Fresno had some of the highest revenues come into the city this year, so we hope to see that the city plan addresses these deep inequities and inequalities in the disadvantaged communities in Fresno. We urge this council and mayor to prioritize and make the following investments when it comes to planning. A comprehensive rent stabilization ordinance that allows reasonable rent increases and provides rehabilitation dollars in return for covenant agreements to units that are excluded per Costa Hawkins Act. 3 million for a mobile home improvement and rehabilitation assistance fund. Assistance for risk youth and youth homelessness. Fresno Unified did report 30% jump in its homelessness student population this year, and that's an alarming number. I just want to say that communities deserve transparency and the opportunity to provide comments and their feedback in the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Carla. Council President, that's all the public comment we have.
All right, thank you, City Clerk, for the edification of the folks watching at home. We have only just received this binder a little less than an hour ago ourselves. We are still analyzing it. Today is an opportunity to hear from the mayor and his staff as to what their proposal is. Beginning early June, we'll begin our budget hearing process, where we will hear from each department head about the request, ask questions, make amendments, and there'll be plenty of opportunity for public input throughout the month of June before we adopt a final budget as well.
Council President, just a quick question. I know we have about 60 department heads today present. Is the intention for us to ask questions of them today, or simply to hear the mayor's presentation?
Today, we're able to ask questions. There will be no action taken today, however.
Excuse me, they're not going to be really prepared to answer questions. Literally, these books came hot off the press last night and this morning, so they're still perusing to see what made it in and what didn't. They can speak generally, but on any, you know, page 242, what does this mean? They're just getting the book this morning as well.
To answer my colleague's question, we can't ask questions, whether those will be answered, I don't know.
Good point. Touche, touche.
So for the record, the people who wrote the book are not prepared to answer questions about what's in the book?
The budget staff wrote the book.
We're going to go on to item A, that's a resolution for CFD and Councilmember Chavez's district. Would you like to kick us off, Councilmember Chavez?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I'm sorry, Council President, I apologize for interrupting. It sounds like CMAC might be muted. Give me one second, please.
Absolutely, thank you, City Clerk. One moment, folks.
Okay, Council President, I believe we're good.
All righty, thank you, City Clerk. I have a motion to approve item A from Councilmember Chavez, and a second from VP Perea. Let's go ahead and take this out to the public for comment. Is there anybody in the chamber that wishes to speak to item A on today's agenda regarding the CFD in Council District Number 5? Seeing nobody in the chambers, City Clerk, do we have anybody online that'd like to speak to this matter?
No, thank you.
Have a motion to approve, and a second, is there any other discussion on the dais? Seeing none, is there any opposition? Seeing none, the item passes, 7-0. All right, next I will invite Mayor Jerry Dyer to present his proposed budget to the city council at this time.
Okay, while we're waiting for his walk-up music and his walk-in, I do want to go ahead and thank all of the staff that are in here while they are still reviewing the outcome of all of the work that they put in. Just like with your budget motions, they submit requests in order to complete what they, did you seriously put it on? Anyway, and so it's a lot of work to do, along with their regular workload, so I want to thank all the staff that's here today for the incredible effort, a lot of back and forth. Like I said, it was hot off the press last night. Tiptoeing, tap dancing, everything I can possibly do. No, seriously, in all seriousness, thank you, council members, for letting me thank them.
Hey, remember in Rocky III, he loses the first one? Then he comes back.
All right, in my defense, I didn't know what it was until he told me. It's a circus song. I didn't go to the circus as a kid, so I didn't recognize it. Where's Jerry at?
Welcome, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for joining us at the city council meeting.
Thank you for being late, as usual. Turn it up again. Make them blush.
Might want to tone it down. He was kind of huffing and puffing when we took that bike ride. And that was electric bike. You imagine me on a real bike? So we are going to wait a couple minutes to get the PowerPoint. Should have been already set up.
All right, theme music and quips aside, I think we are ready to begin the mayor's proposed budget. Good morning, Mayor Dyer. Thank you for joining us here this morning. Excited to see what you got for us.
All right, well, good morning. I did think that you guys had watched this on Facebook Live, but I, Councilmember President Maxwell told me it wasn't up yet, so. So what you were provided with today is the FY24 proposed budget. You got it this morning, I got it this morning. It was fresh off the print, but as Councilmember Arius reminded me, I wrote the book, so it wasn't as important for me to get it. But I also had the opportunity to meet with our council budget subcommittee a couple of days ago, and actually, I thought that was a very good process, like to continue that in the future. And I thought it was, it was good to get some insights both ways, so appreciate that. So it is an honor to be able to present this budget today. It will support the foundation of the vision that we have for the city, as well as our "we work for you" culture. Budget prioritizes community safety, beautify Fresno, homelessness and housing, and investing in our youth. This is in addition, as you all know, to the essential services that we provide every single day in this city, such as repairing streets and sidewalks, picking up trash, ensuring that we have safe and reliable water in our city and sewer systems, as well as maintaining timely and convenient transportation systems. So, the FY24 budget totals just over $1.85 billion. Of that, general fund departments account for $480.5 million. The Enterprise and Internal Services Department account for $866 million. And the special revenue sources, such as Measure C, Measure P, grants, as well as other capital funds, equal about $703.7 million. I'm proud to report to this council that we have a sound fiscal condition, and that remains to be the case in our city. General fund reserve balance is projected to be fully funded at 10% by the end of FY24. That's about $45.7 million. Another piece of good news is that all three of our credit rating agencies, Standard &amp; Poor, Fitch, as well as Moody, upgraded our credit rating this past year, and, which means we can borrow funds when we bond at a lower rate. In real terms, what that means is, for terminal expansion at the airport, we're going to bond $91.1 million. And when we price it out prior to our rate increase, credit rating increase, versus today, we save $4.5 million as a city. So that credit rating is so important, obviously, they base it on a number of factors, but one of them is having a good reserve, which we do. Our pension system remains number one in the state in terms of solvency. Terms of sales tax growth, we are somewhat leveled off now. As you know, we've enjoyed a couple of good years of sales tax and property tax increases. This year, based on some actual numbers that we've received, we're going to be at, we're projected to be at 2.5%, and we're actually pushing that envelope upward a little bit, to 2.5%, as well as 4.25% for property tax. And that, again, is based on some recent actuals. This budget, as we all know, not 100% of our positions are filled year-round. So based on a historical average of about 10% vacancy rate, we are counting on a attrition, and so we are fully funding, well, we're funding 90% this year. That's the first time we've done that, but it gives us a real picture, instead of having these, in some cases, some carryovers that we're not expecting. I know that this council and myself together made a significant investment in one of the city's most valuable resources, and that was our, that's our hard-working employees. And so this budget contains $40.8 million to pay for those contractual obligations that we negotiated over the last couple of years. A $40.8 million investment into our employees, and that's everything, benefits, salary, et cetera. Due to the ongoing rate increases with, excuse me, with PG&E, costs are expected to rise to $42 million this year that we will pay as a city for PG&E. And that's a $16.3 million increase over the last three years, so pretty, pretty substantial. We could do a lot with those dollars. I do want to talk about this briefly. Due to internal, inaccurate internal calculations that were made last year on Measure P, we forecasted Measure P to be revenue at about $58.3 million. That inaccuracy was based on the fact that we had included county sales tax pool, the state sales tax pool, the Bradley Burn issue. the Bradley Burn issue that, that is factored into our normal taxes. That wasn't factored in, as well as some unrealized projected sales tax growth that didn't, didn't happen. And so as a result, this year, we're budgeting in at $48.2 million for Measure P. The budget assumes the existing rate structure for both water water wastewater, water and wastewater of the Department of Utilities, public utilities. However, the solid waste and management division relies on a projected rate increase in FY24, which most of you know, I've, I've talked to you. That la, the, the last solid way, rate increase that we experienced in the city of Fresno was in 2009, 14 years ago. Over that time, fuel has increased, PG&E costs have increased, salaries have increased. We've had inflation, equipment costs have increased, as well as vehicles. So at some point, we're gonna have to go this year on a public, through the public process of 218, to allow for voter protest, and then for us as a, as a collective body to make a decision what we're going to do as we go forward. As you know, we have, the, the, the public, solid waste has depleted its reserve fund, deferred much of the much-needed maintenance and equipment purchases, and left positions unfilled just to be able to remain solvent these last two years. Last year, we used, we were about $3 million in the red that we had to make up. So the reserves are zero. So, community safety. Well, let me go over the, the overall budget. This is a pie chart that shows you all of our, our revenue by department. And you can see that the Public Utilities is the, the one that has the most, $389 million of our $1.85 billion budget. It is followed closely, I believe, by Public Works at $350.8 million. And then the Police Department is up there in the 100, or 261.6 million. And Planning Development, which includes all of our parking, parking revenue, et cetera, 231.9 million. And then this is something that's changed. The, the one that's up next is Parks. 133.5 million total budget. And then followed by the Fire Department, 127.6 million. So those are our overall revenues for the city of Fresno. So let me, this is the employee investment I spoke of, 42.1 million. Then the $16.3 million increase in, in PG&E. And under Community Safety, the prior two budget cycles prioritize recruitment of sworn personnel with the goal of being at full strength by the end of FY24. I'm proud to say we are well on our way, according to the chief, to reach those goals. In FY21, the department was authorized at 838 officers. Today, that number has grown to 900. So thanks to this council, in my administration, we have added 62 police officers in the last two and a half years. What's the return on investment, as Councilmember Arias always says? This year, violent crime is down 16% compared to last year. Last year was also down. Property crimes are down 17%, and homicides have been decreased this year by an astounding 52%. Response times, the calls for service have also decreased dramatically. The increased staffing levels and partnerships with agencies have been key to these successes. The FY24 budget funds 900 sworn positions, including the 12 we added with the grant here recently. The grant pays for one-third of those costs. It funds eight emergency dispatchers, including two supervisors. $1.36 million for ongoing funding of the 20 park rangers, which are being finalized in their training, will be deployed. $500,000 for safety equipment for officers. $600,000 to provide an alternate mental health crisis response, so that police officers will be less engaged in that type of activity. Been working with the county and Behavioral Health, Susan Hold, to make that happen. We are going to, at least I'm proposing, that we purchase a Bearcat armored rescue vehicle this year. I know this has been something that Councilmember Brettafield and Councilmember Carvasi have spoke of. And it's, we're going to do it through a lease. $34,000 is the lease payment for this year. $883,000 to replace 82 patrol vehicles and unmarked vehicles in the Police Department. Eight of those are new vehicles that are part of the street racing unit. The funds that this council previously approved, excuse me, for the 911 center, which was $10 million of ARPA funds, the remaining amount is being continued or rolled over into the FY24. We anticipate FY24 construction beginning. The, we anticipate the 911 center will be completed in FY25. Thank you. In terms of the Fire Department, this past year, Fire Department handled 50,000 emergency calls for service. 7,711 of those were for fire calls, which is an 8.4% increase over 2020, this last year. The FY24 budget funds four new firefighter positions. This will bring the total number of firefighters up to 375. Again, thanks to this council, that's an increase of 70 firefighters over a three-year period. $486,000 for safety equipment and training, as well as the lease of two replacement engines and five vehicles for the Fire Department. Funds have also been set aside under capital improvements for construction of Fire Station 12. Council Vice President Perea has asked about that. And the regional fire training centers, you recall, we received $25 million from the state to complete that project. Housing remember, remains a, a priority of this administration. I know it does of this council. High-quality affordable housing remains something that I think all of us want in this community. The FY24 budget will carry over all of the previous ARPA funds that were not expended. Many of those funds have been designated for projects like tiny homes and so forth that this council had made motions on. Some of those are categorized within the One Fresno Housing Strategy. And of those 47 recommendations, half of them have been approved. But let me tell you the good news. These efforts will result in approximately 3,200 new affordable housing units to be completed by 2025 in the city of Fresno. We're a part of those projects by subsidizing with funds, which includes the senior housing adjacent to a planned senior activity center to begin construction, I promise, in 2024, Council President Maxwell. And since, since taking office, the production of new affordable housing units is something we should all take pride in. Plus those currently in the pipeline for completion by 2025 represents a 1,644% increase in affordable housing when compared to the prior five-year period. That is something we should, again, all take pride in. The FY24 budget also carries over $2.5 million for the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. And under homelessness, to date, more than 1,800 people have received emergency shelter and services through Project Off-Ramp. Vast majority of those have made a safe exit into permanent housing or back with family. And as we know, state funding has allowed for a lot of that to occur through HAP dollars and Project Home Key. But we also know that those dollars are starting to dwindle. And we, as a city, are gonna have to have a funding source, at least an interim funding source, until we can work with the county and get them to assume many of those responsibilities that they are receiving funds for. I had a conversation with the governor yesterday about that very thing, along with some other mayors. In the interim, $700,000 from the opioid settlement award has been set aside in FY24 to provide future interim services for addiction for those in the shelters. $400,000 is also included in the FY24 budget to provide warming and cooling centers, again. And it is my intent, at least, I hope the councils, that we will outsource this function to a third-party operator. Downtown, as you've heard me say many times, great cities have great downtown, and I believe we're well on our way to a great downtown. Although not contained in this budget, you're all aware of the governors may revise, and if approved by the legislature, will provide $250 million for Fresno, which will et cetera, accelerate our revitalization efforts. With that in mind, FY24 and beyond are poised to be years of significant investment in downtown Fresno. During 2023, several noticeable improvements, as we know, occurred at our stadium, including new turf and paint. The prior year was a new video board, audio system, and LED lighting enhancement. And the FY24 budget includes an additional $1.87 million for clubhouse capital improvements and ongoing maintenance. There's an additional $747,000 being carried over to complete those things that were committed to in FY23. And all of those are in order to stay compliant with Major League Baseball, so that we can have a MLB affiliate. In addition, $300,000 investment is being made in audio and video equipment upgrades at the convention center, so we can attract new clients. And this, currently, this equipment is being rented, so the return on investment within a couple of years. Also, some funding in there for security, as well as increased coordination this year on downtown security, as well as some upgrades to our parking structures. So in terms of public work improvements and maintenance, here's something I hope all of you are supportive of, and I've heard it from many of you. Due to the amount of rain we've received, potholes seem to be everywhere. While the Public Works Department has swiftly responded in order to repair those, we need to be more, much more proactive and provide a longer fix, a lasting fix. Currently, there are no dedicated pothole crews in the city of Fresno, which was surprising to me. Instead, the department reassigns employees from other duties when the need arises. So it's no wonder that we end up with as many potholes as we do. It's a resource issue. The FY24 budget provides $1.76 million in funds to create newly established full-time pothole crews that will operate year-round in the city of Fresno at $1.7 million. Those funds also will take care of or, or support vehicles and specialty equipment needed to implement a more durable hot-mix asphalt patch that will perform better and last longer, and will last longer even when done in the winter months. These crews will reduce response times to pothole repairs from three business days to one business day, and allow our crews to become much less reliant upon citizens reporting potholes through our Fresco or 311 system, and become much more proactive. Traffic safety. I know this is something that has been constantly brought to my attention by Councilmember Carvasi, and I appreciate that, especially when it turns to pedestrian and bicycle safety. So in an attempt to reduce bicycle and pedestrian fatalities, additional traffic calming and congestion relief steps are being taken. The FY24 proposed budget includes the design and our construction, construction of 24 traffic signals, 18 traffic signal modifications and upgrades, nine Hawk pedestrian crossing signals, what's called a quick-build school safety track, traffic improvement, that's $250,000. And again, those are all things that are being done to make our streets safer. There's also $200,000 for residential traffic calming to reduce speeds in many of our neighborhoods. Beautify Fresno. I think all of us are committed, and in fact, I know all of us are committed, to beautifying our city, whether that's through removing trash, graffiti, and blight, paving streets, and repairing sidewalks. But all of us are committed to that. The FY24 budget provides the following. The first one was brought to me by three councilmembers, actually. Councilmember Osparsa, Council Vice President Perea, and Councilmember Chavez. And that was the creation of four Beautify Fresno teams comprised of two employees per team at a cost of $600,000 to begin in January. These teams are patterned after the successful District 7 pilot program that Councilmember Osparsa initiated. The teams will be divided into four quadrants within our city and function in both a proactive and a reactive manner. But they're gonna focus their efforts on large items such as appliances and furniture that are oftentimes left in our alley in all of our policing, or all of our council districts. And so these teams will be functioning full-time throughout the year. As you know, we launched the Downtown Ambassadors. They will continue to be downtown. They're funded in this program through straight, state dollars. They're used not only to greet people and, and provide directions downtown, but also to beautify downtown through picking up trash and graffiti. And I'm proud to say this concept will be expanded into the Tower District in late summer or early fall, a commitment to the Council Vice President. Our beautification efforts funded include the following. $284,000 for pressure washing sidewalks and litter removal in the Tower District. Planting, Council President Maxwell, over 1,000 trees in the city for more urban greening. $300,000 in downtown beautification, Councilmember Arias. $2.8 million for proactive tree trimming throughout the city. And as you may recall, prior to Council President Maxwell and I come into the office, we had zero money allocated for tree trimming. And it was through this council that we decided to allocate a cer, a certain dollar amount. Councilmember Brettafield actually upped those dollars to where we could reduce our cycle on tree trimming. So $2.8 million again in this year's budget. $1.275 million for emergency street tree service. $3.6 million for street cleaning of 1,700 road miles. We also have $7.1 million for 70 lane miles of street overlay and paving. $200,000 for historic lights in the Tower District to be enhanced with LED lighting. Council Vice President Perea brought that forward. $2.1 million for Slurry Seal program to prolong the streets. $200,000 for fencing and parking lot improvements. This was brought to me by Councilmember Arias at the African-American Museum. $5.1 million for the city's concrete program, one crew per council district. And I think you guys use that very efficiently throughout the year. This is something that's extremely critical. A lot of folks don't know the, the needs of all of our facilities in the city, and I certainly don't either. But this was brought to us last year and as well as this year. So the FY24 budget contains $7.7 million of American Rescue funds that were taken from the initial batch of ARPA dollars for the replacement of critical electrical infrastructure at the MSC, which is antiquated and unreliable. This will allow for emergency backup generators to be placed there to support the Traffic Operations Center, the 911 Communication Center, the fuel pumps, all of our radio equipment, our information services, communication equipment as well. Anything that requires an uninterrupted power supply. So we really do, as a city, have to do this. Touch on economic development. I think you guys know the stats. Thanks to all of us and perhaps the previous council as well. I think we're well poised to have a sustained economy, having enjoyed the nation's strongest post-pandemic recovery and experiencing California's fastest wage growth in 2022. This budget fully funds our Economic Development Department and ongoing efforts to recruit and expand business opportunities in Fresno. Funding also is being provided for the following. $175,000, that number was up last year. Funding provided to our Fresno County Economic Development Corporation. And $180,000 for the Chamber of Commerce in support of the Made Central California Annual Food Expo. Let me transition quickly to the airport. FYI, FYI, our airport is one of the fastest-growing airports in the nation. We have 122% pa, capacity, or not capacity, but passenger increase since pre-pandemic. That's pretty phenomenal, one of the fastest-growing airports in the nation. As our airport expands, I think we all know, so does our economy. To build upon these successes, we have a terminal expansion project underway that's $147 million for two phases. To build upon these successes, we have a terminal expansion project underway that's a hundred and forty-seven million dollars for two phases. Phase one of the terminal expansion will include a new Federal Inspection Service facility, expanded security checkpoint, two additional passenger boarding gates, and more. Phase two will add an additional concourse with two passenger boarding gates. What does that mean? These improvements will allow us to increase our capacity to triple our international flights coming in and out of our airport. So that is a big commitment, and again, ninety-one point one million dollars of that is being bonded. Talk about parks and green space. Measure P in FY twenty-four is budgeted at forty-eight point two million. In addition, there is thirty... In addition, there is thirty-nine point six million being carried over from FY twenty-three. These funds have yet to be fully expended, but those funds are already programmed to certain capital projects identified by this council and the administration last year. And/or these funds are already committed under the categories of Measure P to a certain organization, for example, the Fresno Arts Council, clearly spelled out in the Measure P language. So what that means is, now with the Cultural Arts Plan nearing completion in FY twenty-four, the cultural, the Fresno Arts Council will receive FY twenty-two, three, and four funding. We anticipate that being fifteen million dollars. So they'll get a substantial amount of dollars. Much of that is going to be passed through, almost all of it, through grants that they will be asking for applicants. In total, the FY twenty-four budget contains eighty-seven point eight million in Measure P revenue. That's with carryover, resulting in a total parks budget, as was previously stated, of a hundred and thirty-three point five million. I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. You know, prior to Measure P and the American Rescue Funds coming to the city of Fresno, there were six capital projects in the works in the Parks Department and Public Works. Today, there's a hundred and eighty-two. So I say that to ask for some grace, as it takes longer to get those projects done, to get them engineered, to get them designed. I know there's an expectation on the part of the community, the Measure P dollars are here, flip the switch. Parks are green, we're buying land, we're developing parks. All the irrigation systems are fixed, but it does take some time, and that's why it's a thirty-year measure. And as you know, we cannot bond against future revenue. So two point one million for design and operating costs of the new senior center. That, actually, in total, there's four million one hundred and ninety-two thousand. Eight point eight million for the park at construction of Milburn and Dakota Park. That's with Prop sixty-eight and UGM fees. Five point seven million for radio park renovations, again with Prop sixty-eight and UGM. Councilmember Chavez, rolling over the five, seven point eight point, seven million eight hundred and sixty-four thousand for the forty-nine acre park at Peach in California, which you've been a champion of, featuring soccer, perhaps, field hockey, and park amenities. There's a number of these other ones on here. I'm just going to highlight the big ones. Eight hundred and fifty thousand, seven thousand for design and construction of the Maxi Parks HVAC, and another fifty thousand of CDBG, and some other miscellaneous grants. Total project cost a million forty-seven thousand. Two point five million for the point six four acre park located in the corner of Broadway and Elizabeth is in this budget. Construction will be completed in FY twenty-four. And in terms of some of our trails and maintenance highlights, this is a big one in Councilmember Carbasi's district. There's about sixteen million dollars for the Eaton Trailhead and River West Eaton Trail Extension. Fourteen, almost fifteen million of that is from the state, and another one point four million from Measure C. Ten point five, almost ten point six million for park irrigation and landscape maintenance for regional neighborhood parks. Six point two million for the Midtown Trail completion. Four point one million for street maintenance program, our street tree maintenance program that's already mentioned. Two point nine million for the Southwest Green Trails, Measure P and TCC dollars for that. Two point five million for San Joaquin River Parkway, and that's Measure P, and then two point four million for Southwest Fresno Green Trails and Cycle. Eight hundred thousand for major beautification projects in our city. So as you can see, there are a lot of dollars being set aside. And I'm almost done. Youth investment. The FY twenty-four budget contains four point six million dollars in carryover to support the Youth Jobs Core Program. As you know, we originally received seven point four million from the state. That was to hire, hard to hire youth, those that have been involved in the foster system, touched by the criminal justice system. And we've been hiring those folks for city employment and now transitioning them out to nonprofit organizations. To date, we've hired a hundred and eighty-two of those individuals, with a hundred and forty-four remaining active. The FY twenty-four budget also contains three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to further the efforts of Advance Peace, which, in our opinion, has proven to be successful this past year in contributing to a reduction in gang violence and homicides in our city. In Camp Fresno, four hundred and thirty-six thousand in Parks Budget for capital improvements. That's replacing four cabins. Six hundred and nine thousand is being carried over for youth programming at the camp. These funds were provided through California's Violence Intervention Program. Terms of transportation, city's committed to transitioning all FAX buses and light-duty vehicles to zero emission by the year of 2040. Within this budget, new compressed natural gas buses, fuel cell buses, air para-transit cutaways are planned to replace the aging fleet and with more fuel-efficient and cleaner vehicles. Radio and dispatch system upgrades are currently underway and scheduled for completion in FY twenty-four. Here's some of the highlights in the FY twenty-four budget. Complimentary, complimentary meaning reduced rate, and provided service for para-transit services funded at seven hundred thousand dollars to meet the needs of passengers who are unable to use our FAX bus systems, and again, provided a reduced rate. One point seven million is in the budget for part of an agreement between FAX and EOC for delivery of social service transportation. Contract construction is funded at six point five million for improved infrastructure and amenities at bus stops this coming year. And then lastly, City Attorney's Office. I generally don't go over this, but I thought I would because you need to know what they asked for and what they received. Everything they asked for, they received. Nine hundred thousand dollars for thirteen new positions to assist with increased litigation, PRA requests and contract compliance. One point one four million for pay raises, step increases, and contractual obligations. There's seven hundred and four thousand dollars of American Rescue Funds are being re-appropriated for downtown demolition, as well as tenant relocation benefits program. And so those are the things, and there's some other in there with training and so forth, but everything they requested, they received. Same with the clerk. We had added some dollars that were requested for, for services of interpretation. I think there was about a hundred and sixteen thousand additional dollars that we provided in there to the budget. So that is the FY twenty-four budget, and it is complicated in many ways. Part of it has to do with the increased revenues we've received over the years and the carryover of those dollars, and also because of many funding sources that we have in the city of Fresno. And I'd like to close by thanking my staff, starting with my city manager, Georgia Anne White. I want to thank her for everything she does for the city and for helping me through the budget process. Assistant City Manager Greg Barfield, TJ Miller, Ruthie Quinto. All of them are instrumental and are at every one of our budget meetings. One of the people that I go to frequently for budget numbers and history is our Deputy City Manager, Alma Torres. Incredible. And then Henry Fiero, who is the most patient person I've ever met in my life, and is very flexible, and especially last-minute changes that we make, that I make, and then over the next month of June, being able to make those last-minute deals, that motions that all of you make. So a big thank you to all of them, and I'd be remiss if I didn't say a special thank you to all the department directors that are not only involved in putting this budget together as we meet with each one of them to develop the budget, but also for executing this budget. If it wasn't for them, nothing matters in this budget book. They do an incredible job. So with that, I know this, again, you got it a week early, Councilmember Sparza. I know you wanted it six months early, but we gave it to you a week early. And I know I look forward, no, I don't, to all the budget deliberations in June, and then being able to walk away after all the budget motions. Hopefully, we'll keep it under a hundred this year. And we walk away by the end of June with a balanced budget that will truly support all the efforts that we need to do for our community. So thank you. Any questions? I'll be around.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. I appreciate, obviously, all the work that you and your staff, that you just mentioned, all the department heads have put into this. Again, I think it's true what we heard the folks in the audience say today, what is essentially a moral document that shows which way the city is headed going forward. I know it's not easy when you have a city with unlimited demands that vary across town and a limited budget to make everybody happy, but I do appreciate what you have done this year, and I think you have taken additional time and consideration into meeting with each of us specifically, as well as a budget committee to understand more of our needs on the ground throughout the city and our various districts. I think we've gotten better at that over the last three years. I hope you're right. I think the first year we came on, we set a a record-breaking precedent of about a hundred and twenty different amendments to that.
And a hundred and twenty million.
And a hundred and twenty million. I think it got a little better last year, and I'm hoping it gets even better this year. I anticipate there's still going to be some changes reflected. I think you've done a pretty good job of listening to all of us here on the dais. I'm going to need a lot more time to read through this and see what it means for my constituents. I'll probably hold off on most of my questionings and critiques for the budget hearings. But I did want to say thank you for taking the time to at least listen to me and the needs of my constituents and businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just close with this, that, you know, when you come in as a new mayor, you think you're going to put forth your budget, and then it gets passed. And then you realize how much you have to work with the council leading up to the budget. And I've tried to do that, but while still making sure that the mayoral initiatives are covered and what the department directors are asking for, we're able to cover. I will tell you, we had to go through an exercise already of cutting nineteen million dollars of requests from our department directors in order to get it to this point. So we've done a lot of work to get it to this point. But again, I want to say thank you to all of you because there's a lot of, there's a lot of success that we've seen over the last two and a half years, and it's a credit to each one of you and the administration, our team. So no one can take credit alone, and I appreciate you all. Thank you. God bless.
Is this the biggest budget that we'll have seen in this city?
About a hundred and thirty million dollars bigger than last year. Last year, I believe we went in at about one point seven two seven billion.
Thank you. All right, ready to play hardball?
Ready to go.
Councilmember Chavez.
Let the sausage making begin.
Thank you, and we're going to, we're going to have to give Director Fiero a raise because he's about to get motion sickness here in the next couple of, couple of weeks. Mayor, I want to thank you and your team. You guys always do a great job of bringing forward your recommendations. I think the last couple of years, to my colleague's point, I've never seen budgets that were able to put us in a position to make those key investments in our neighborhoods, right? From the conversations we had with my council colleagues and ourselves and Rebuild Fresno and what you brought forward, I think I see that reflected in the, in the budget, and I wanted to publicly thank you for that and your team. I think especially with, you know, my colleagues keep getting tired of hearing it, but I've seen about thirteen of these. I get motion sickness too, but I think we have a good opportunity here to set a good foundation. I just want to make sure that we're transparent about the next conversation that we're going to have. I saw your pie chart that you provided in the PowerPoint presentation, but I did some, some quick, some quick math. The percentage that you assign to some of the departments are based on the total budget, right? The one point eight billion.
All revenue that they have to operate with, general fund, special revenue, et cetera.
Okay, and, and, because I got a couple of text messages from folks. Our, so for example, our general fund budget, which we know is the most flexible, is four hundred and eighty million dollars, right?
Yes.
From the budget we assigned, I believe our police department reflects fifty-four percent of that general fund budget. Or did we include some of the grants that we received or other resources? City man, maybe that's a question for city manager. Is that just the total budget for the department?
So are you talking about on the pie chart where we show twelve point eight percent?
Yeah, the pie chart, but then also on the backup documentation. So I'll give you an example. There's two hundred and sixty-one million dollar budget for the police, right?
That includes general fund plus other revenue sources.
Plus other revenues.
So I can give you general fund right now.
So the fifty-four percent of that is roughly, how much would it be then, city manager?
Fifty point nine percent for police.
Okay, fifty point nine percent, and then for our fire folks, I had twenty-six percent. Is that, is it lower?
Fire is seventeen point eight.
So we got sixty-seven percent total of the general fund. The rest are grants, correct?
Yeah, and then parks without, their revenue is five point seven.
Okay.
I think they're at about twenty-two million of general fund when we first started. We had to maintain a base for Measure P. I think that was about fourteen eight, fifteen million, somewhere near.
And I just want to make sure we're, we're dealing with the numbers that we're dealing, because I think the pie chart, I think, Mayor, to your point, you were talking about the total budget on there. I'll save the more in-depth questions when the departments present, because today, I think, everybody's hungry already. But I do want to make sure that we get on the record and get some clarity for the benefit of the public. On your page for the summary, it says sales tax, tax growth is projected at two point five percent. Was that the conversation we had with Muni and our own methodology? If you could walk us through what that methodology entailed?
We're going to go through that on June fifth in very great detail when we do the general fund overview, but the two point five percent, yes, is based on conversations with Muni and our own analysis of, of where we should have landed.
The, Muni's projection was lower on property tax as well as sales tax, if I recall.
So I want to get a little bit more clarity on that. I like to chat with you before that. And then, Mayor, you referenced the miscalculation of Measure P, which essentially cost or reduced the amount by ten million dollars for that. What was that miscalculation?
It was, generally, when you're looking at your sales tax revenue, you look at the county sales tax pool. There's a state, state sales tax pool. There's the Bradley Burn one percent in there. And then there was calculations based on what do we anticipate, based on Muni Financial. What do we anticipate our sales tax growth being? So all those factors were taken in. So number one, our sales tax growth did not end up where it was projected, so that lowered it. The county sales tax pool and the state sales tax pool was taken out, as well as Bradley Burn, and then that's what reduced it down to that level.
And just to work clear, who, who made that miscalculation? Was it Muni or was it our own folks?
Within our, within our budget offices, I understand internally.
Yeah, the methodology, we looked at Measure P as a sales tax, right?
Which is natural.
We correlated the growth the same as we would regular sales tax, and we didn't realize that the calculation for Measure P does not include those other elements of sales tax. So regular sales tax is calculated differently as the Measure P sales tax. And given that it's a new tax, we were sort of new at it.
Yeah, it was an honest mistake, but here's the good news. Our Parks folks were looking, were spending money based on actuals. So they weren't necessarily spending money based on what was projected. They were spending money based on actuals. So fortunately, that's, we didn't, we didn't overspend.
Well, you ask our Parks Director. I think we spent Measure P money the next twenty years into the future, Mayor.
No, we didn't. You guys did.
And then second to last question, the ninety percent figure that we use based on historical data for the positions that were funded. City manager, what's been our trend the last couple of years? What have we actually funded in the past?
So we've done, we've done this a number of different ways over the years. So in the past, we have swept vacancy savings on a regular basis, on a quarterly basis, on a monthly basis, depending on what the, the budget situation is. This, departments have done it different way, where they've budgeted their own attrition rate. What we did in this budget, to the mayor's point about being nineteen million in the hole at the beginning point, we know historically that we have anywhere we know historically that we have anywhere between 8% and 15% vacancy rate in the city of Fresno. And we went ahead and just did it at our level. Instead of having departments do it individually, we knew, we, we costed out what the value of a 10% vacancy rate was, and we took that off the top to help balance the budget.
All right. And then, last question, the 10% reserve that we have that yielded the $45 million, the 10%, that's our own internal threshold that we have, correct?
That's the reserve management policy established by, established by council policy. And I need to check the charter because I know part of the reserve management was put into the charter. I don't know if it's by percentage or not. I'd have to go back and look at that. But there is a reserve policy that was in the charter, but, and you have a more lengthy reserve policy, that's a policy document.
I'm very familiar. I was the swingboard on the balanced budget.
I will say that in order to get to the 10%, we only had to add 1 million this year.
That, that was, that was what I was trying to get to.
Yeah, $1 million is in there for the reserve.
1 million in additional to last year.
To the interest.
But, but I'm, I'm trying to correlate that. So, last year, our general fund budget was less, right? You referenced earlier the amount that was much less. I think Councilmember, President Maxwell, mentioned that. This year, it's more. If we're using the 10% percentage, how much more did we put in this year than we had last year?
So, interest fluctuated that, that generated revenue. But we put in a million this year in order to get it to the 10%. And then we project this at the end. It's not 10% at the beginning. It's 10% at the end of FY '24. So, we're accruing all that interest over the course of this fiscal. And that's what will get us to the, the 10%.
So, how much will that be?
Last year, I can't remember what we added last year to the reserve.
Just send me that information, city manager, because I'd like to, like to have that.
You want to know what the number is?
What, yeah, what the total amount of additional millions of dollars we're putting into the reserve this year at the end of the period you just described.
1 million.
So, the, through fiscal year?
We're putting, we're adding 1 million, and then there's increased revenue from interest.
1.2. I also want to, Ruthie, can you look at my text message and answer, please? I believe one of the things also is, a few weeks ago, remember, we moved some of the ARPA dollars into the general fund. And so, when we calculate the, the 10%, it, it is, it's not one-time money in the general, it's not, you know, it's only pure general fund. Ruthie, is that accurate? Okay. So, we, there are some numbers in the general fund where it looks like the general fund is bigger, but some, some of that is because we moved the ARPA dollars in, and we don't count the ARPA dollars for purposes of the reserve. Can you clarify that, Ruthie?
All, all the one-time dollars are not included in the denominator, if you will. So, they're not there for last year. They're not there for this year either.
Can we do a breakdown of what the actual general fund is and what these additional dollars are? I think that'd be helpful for the council to, to have. All right. Thank you, President.
All right. We're going to go to some softball questions now with Councilmember Arias.
I feel my MA virus coming back.
That's right. You better get the doctor in the room because your blood pressure's about to go up. All right, that's right, defibrillator, too. So, so Mayor, I haven't been here 13 years like my, my colleague Chavez, but I have been here in five budgets, and I know all the tricks that staff holds on, you know, how they budget. But I want to start off with a couple of things. One is, one of the tricks that is typically utilized is a focus on specific aspects of the budget highlights. For example, in the police budget highlight, you highlight the additional, I think, 12 positions. Some of that is grant-funded. But in reality, since the actual expenditures in the police budget in 2022, which was last year, to your proposed budget, it's an increase of $45 million to the city. Same thing for fire. In '22, the actual expenditures compared to your proposed budget is a $40 million increase in the city budget. What I've heard from staff in the last several months is that the best times in terms of growth in sale and tax revenue is behind us. But yet, your proposed budget recommends a ton of new positions. So, I'm going to struggle in this process with, you know, reconciling that reality. If the revenue record days are behind us, why do we still continue to grow the bureaucracy in addition to, we know we agreed to higher salaries and benefits for employees, but we're also adding a whole lot of new positions. And I'm not going to be satisfied with the presentation that, well, some of these are grant-funded. They are, but they have on long-term implications to the city because those grants run out between one and three years, and then the city's fully responsible picking them up. The other portion of it that I want to call your attention to is, you know, administratively, we have 60 people here. In '22, we have grown the mayors and city managers' budget by $4 million compared to your proposed expenditure. So, the system has grown across all departments. And with more money from the federal government and one-time funds, we need people to do the work. So, I recognize that. But those people, in my view, are going to stick around after that one-time money runs out. So, I, I want to be thoughtful of looking at the, at the budget and its whole complexity and its full context. And just as a heads up to these departments, police and fire make up the majority of our, of our expenditures and our investments of the city. In, when crime is up, the police department asks for more resources, and this body has granted it. When crime is down, the police department credits police for reduction in crime, and they ask for more money. I'm yet to see the actual data that correlates more officers or more police resources to reduction in crime. More officers are not the reason for increase in crime. I don't want to hold it as a trial of the theory. This isn't a university to debate that. I, I, I want to be thoughtful that I'm going to look for every single budget line asked for by those departments, is what is the return investment in terms of a better service for the residents? For example, in police, if we're increasing your budget by 45 million in a 12-month period, what is the increase in response time when people call 911? If that response time hasn't improved, then we're going to have a conversation about why not? Because we've granted more positions for dispatchers, better pay for dispatchers, more officers, more units. So, I'm going to look for what is the response in improvement for response of people calling 911. For fire, this council has invested a record amount in fire positions. And as I told the city manager earlier this week, it has now come to my attention, and I am fully vested in understanding why those record positions have not led to better service when it comes to inspections of housing projects, inspections of businesses that are necessary for them to open and people to move in or businesses to operate. And I know it's complex. There's the 410 rule. There's, you know, staffing issues, vacancies. There's a whole bunch of reasons why. But ultimately, this body has increased your budget by a record amount, and we're not seeing that reflected in better and faster service for the end customer, which are residents, businesses, and projects in which we're in a housing crisis. So, my questions are going to be directed in that area. What is the better service for the residents as a response to the more resources? And in parks, Mayor, I, I've been trying to sound this alarm for a while now. I knew we were going to, at some point, be in a place where we have $100 million in Measure P, and projects are not, the money's not out the door. And I personally know it takes four to five years to get a project built. It takes a long time to get the environmentals, everything done, hiring a staffing. But ultimately, it's $100 million not out the door and not in better service for the residents of the city. So, in this budget process, I'm going to focus on the strategy that the past administration, the current administration, probably three city managers ago, sold this body on, which was, let Public Works handle all capital projects for parks. I remember asking at that time, if we're going to give Public Works the responsibility to build all these parks, do they have the staffing to actually execute? I was told they have sufficient staffing. Two years later, there's a ton of money sitting there that's not being, you know, constructed with. So, I'll be looking very deeply on why isn't the money getting out, with the full understanding that it takes a while. But there are certain things that if you put your emphasis and focus on, could actually get done. And then, lastly, I'll just point out, Mayor, that your proposal indicates that you assume a utility rate increase for garbage. Do we know what that assumption is in this budget? How much are you projecting the garbage rates to increase by if this budget is adopted as proposed?
Yeah, I think those discussions have to occur with council because we're looking at is over a five-year period, trying to smooth that out. And can we, the first year, perhaps, lower the amount for the, the community and maybe borrow some of the, you know, the money in one of the other DP, the Department of Public Utility departments in order to make that less painful on the community? So, I'd, I'd love, we do want to have those discussions with the budget committee and then to figure out where we want to go as a, as a body this, this current year. And if that decision is that none of us are ready to go forward with that, then we need to figure out how we're going to continue to maintain that service through reduced personnel.
And, and I understand, I'm not trying to put you on the spot on what the amount is, but there is an amount baked into this budget. So, so what is the amount baked into the budget? What is the assumption?
I have to get the total dollar amount. It's to basically keep us in the black. I don't know off the top of my head. We'll get it for you.
All right. And I just want to point out that in that conversation, like, we've talked privately, I'm going to be looking to what better service are we going to provide the customer for a higher fee?
Yeah.
I know costs have gone up, but we need to be tasked with improving service. And I'll just leave you with this, Mayor. The, the reason why there's usually 100 motions to change the budget is because I think me and my colleagues understand our neighborhoods pretty well. And what we hear from neighbors is, when are you going to fix the street in front of my house, the park next door?
Right.
The sidewalk? And every budget that I've ever seen in five years doesn't prioritize neighborhood improvements. It always prioritizes funding the current system with new equipment, more personnel. But it doesn't look at how many more miles, how many more sidewalks, how many more trees are we trimming at the granular level that people see every day. And I, I would also just ask you with, with, with this idea, Mayor, that I think our leadership team, all 60 of them, should spend more time in our respective neighborhoods. Not at communities being, you know, screamed at by residents who are frustrated, but by going to Art Hop, by going to a farmer's market in Tower, by seeing for themselves what we see, right? Yesterday, I was in downtown, and the pedestrian lights, the historical poles are still broken. They've been broken now for three years. And I know we put up the street traffic lights, but I have to hear from the businesses, these things are still broken, and it reflects that the city's not investing. I know we have invested. We've been there. We've dealt with those business owners. But those little things, whether it's a missing tree that's been missing for four years in front of Chancery Park, or a sidewalk that's been broken for five years. So, that's the perspective I'm going to take on this, is how do we improve neighborhoods, especially in the older part, so that they can be assured that more money to local government means improvements in, in their areas. But I do thank you for the presentation. It's going to be a, a good process, though. It wasn't too bad, was it?
No, no. I, I share your sentiments on, the, the biggest challenge I've ever had as a police chief or now as a mayor, is the community expectations are here, and the reality of capacity is here. And that gap is always the tension between us. And then we have to prioritize. And then we know, even if we prioritize, we're still not going to get anywhere close. But, you know, we try. We try our very, very best. So, thank you.
All right. Next up, we have Council Vice President Perea.
Okay. Thank you, Council President. This is my first budget, so I'm really excited about what I am hearing so far, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for meeting with the Budget Subcommittee this week. Thank you for the meetings, just one-on-one. I see a lot of my asks reflected in this budget. So, you're, you're still my favorite mayor.
Until I'm not.
Until you're not. But so far, so good. There's funding for Station 12. There's funding for the warming, the cooling centers, the pothole repair team to transition our historical lights in the Tower District to LED, pressure washing in the Tower District. These are all things that are priorities of mine. I'm going to take a deeper dive into the budget, and so I will save my, my questions and my criticisms for then. But overall, I'm just very appreciative for what I see so far.
Thank you.
And thank you to you, to your team, to the department heads. I'm looking forward to hearing from, from you guys on your specific departments and doing what we can to continue to invest in District 1 and improve the quality of life for our residents across the city. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice President.
Councilmember Sparza.
Yes, good morning, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I can tell you made a decent effort to include a lot of things you had, you gathered throughout your conversations with myself and I'm sure other councilmembers, as I'm, as I'm hearing. You know, the last couple of years, we, you know, we, we made the sausage to put this thing together, and I'm sure you'll have as much success with the new crop of leadership this time around. I did have a few clarifying questions. Some may be, may be able to answer, some, some not. Some of them were answered already, just based on the conversations that I've been having with my colleagues already. The Measure P dollars, 48 is now 58, but there was inaccuracies last, last year. What were the actuals for this current fiscal year?
They came in right at 46?
It's still damn good.
Forty, forty-six and a half, forty-six, five, forty, almost 47.
That's excellent. I mean, it really is. Compared to the 32 or 35, I forget, we were projecting.
Uh, 35.
Yeah, no, these are, these are still great numbers.
Yeah, these, these numbers are up about, at least they have been, up about $10, $11 million above projections.
Yeah, that's good. With respect to the, the funding, the 90%, I know that's, that's new. I'm, I'm going to be curious, maybe you can't answer all the questions now, but just how that 10% was distributed in terms of where the attrition was decided. And I only, I ask because, I mean, it's an interesting way to, to balance, as opposed to kind of continuously sweeping throughout the fiscal year. But I struggle to reconcile that with, on your PowerPoint here, 40.8 million in personnel increases, as well as all the various increases in positions I am seeing throughout, throughout the budget, police department.
Forty, the 40 million is only pay raises and benefits calculated to across the board for, for employees.
So, we'll take that out. But there, but there are, there are increases in authorized positions in other, in various departments. So, I'll be curious to know, you know, what the distribution was and how you decided what essentially we're not going to fill. Because if you were to try and fill them at some point, that would put us over.
Yes.
That would unbalance the, the budget. This was asked sort of in various forms, but I think I'll just kind of ask it head-on. What is the gap in solid waste if we were to remove the Prop 218 assumption?
15? It's about 15, I believe, this year, depending on we hit it. But I'll, I'll get the confirmed number.
We grew from 3 million in the red to 15 million in the red this, this year?
Well, 3 million was with us holding vacancies.
I see.
Us not deferring maintenance, all those things. That was to make sure we had, our budget was with all of those vacancies, with deferring or equipment purchase, you know, and equipment. I, I look forward to when Brock can come up here and talk about what the cost increases are for some of these loaders now, the, the trash loaders. It's, it's incredible how much the costs have gone up for equipment, as we all know, across the board. And then we know, what was the fuel, what did we pay per gallon in 2009? And what do we pay for fuel today in 2023? And, and what does solid waste do? They drive all day long. They're burning fuel all day long. So...
It's 12 million.
12 million dollars.
Okay. So, it went from 3 million to 12 million, essentially. Okay, okay.
The 12 million includes, we had to do some equipment replacement. We're just running out of trash trucks. We have them breaking down. We had a couple in accidents. So, it's not just straight people. It, it, you know, it assumes that we're going to try and operate as if we are filling our vacancies and have enough truck to be able to keep the routes up. So, it's, it's, it's sort of all in. The 12 million keeps us at status quo of operating the department as it should be operated.
And, and we will more than likely entertain the option of a lease versus an outright purchase to smooth those costs. purchase to smooth those costs.
Yeah, and it was a criticism of the people.
Sure.
The city is run by, look behind you, the city is run by people, right?
Yeah.
I mean, that's the, that's the number one cost is, is personnel and the folks that keep it going every day. With respect to the, the four new firefighters, since I've been here, this is my fifth budget, we've always added firefighters in threes in order to increase staffing per day by, by one. Why the uneven number or how's, how did we come to that for this time around?
This was based on the relief pool. The relief pool had two firefighter specialists, I believe, two fire captains that were short to make that number, so it wasn't based on that. I, I will tell you, if you look across our city now, every one of our fire engines, except for two now, have four firefighters on them. And we all know the importance of that because the general rule, when you get on a fire scene, it takes, you have to have four people, two in, two out, so. But this is, that's exactly right, the way we were doing, based on threes or nines. And this is by a relief pool.
All right, Mayor. And lastly, you know, is my, my, my first budget where the Mayor has included a total cost of PG&E. I've never seen that before, right? Highlighted in, in any budget, what we're paying for, for our utility bills.
Yeah.
Gas and electric. So obviously, I know that's a priority for you. I know you and I, you know, we don't, we don't see eye to eye on the, the viability of those plans, but I'll, I'll tell you this, Mayor, right? And I didn't get a chance to tell you this, we pulled the item the last time around that, that came around. But, you know, it's, I mean, it's going to, it'll be no less than a couple billion dollars to be able to build our own grid. And what I want to know from you, right, is, and our, our folks, really what is, deep down, what is our bonding capacity? And not, not because I want to build our own grid, but because if we did have the capacity to build our own grid, you know, why haven't we seriously explored a long-term commitment to fixing our infrastructure, our 800-plus million dollars in deferred maintenance on sidewalks, street curbs, gutters, and repaving our roads?
Sure.
Not to mention the parks, but the parks, we do have a stream. Too bad we can't bond against it, but we do have a stream for the parks.
Yeah. We, we will get you those numbers. I, I don't have them off the top of my head, but I, I, we did, two years ago, we looked at bonding capacity. We were heavily bonded. Over the years, we have bonded about everything. So, and that was from the stadium, is still bonded heavily, the convention center. You look around the city, I think, you know, we paid cash for the southeast district station, heavily bonded, but those, those dollars are starting to, to roll off. And in fact, that's, we met with some of you in terms of how we're going to pay for the firefighters. The first 42, when they roll off, is going to be coincided with the time that one of our bond payment goes off by 10 million or so to cover those costs. So that will increase our bond capacity at that time again. And so for me, it's not, not just about, you know, what is our bonding capacity, but what is our ability to repay the bond, right? That's what we have to look at. And now with the reduced credit, I mean, the, the increased credit ratings, that's a big help, too.
Well, this is all to say that, I mean, I, I want to have a serious conversation with this budget about really exploring what, you know, what, what we can do to, to really get ahead of that deferred maintenance. I mean, it's a, it's a tall order. I mean, it would require us to, you know, spend all of our general fund money, you know, two times over to actually fix. But, you know, just as, as we sort of are reaching for the stars and being cognizant, you know, I, I've been wondering, what is, what really is our bonding capacity? Because I, I think, I don't know, I couldn't speak for them, but I, I think most of my colleagues and probably yourself would agree that if we had a route, if we had a pathway to be able to address that deferred maintenance, I mean, that would probably be a very high priority for our residents. So I do want to have a serious conversation, maybe, maybe see about some funding set aside to at least kind of explore what that would look like and, you know, what a pathway might be, a serious pathway.
We will make sure we have that ability.
All right, that'll conclude my comments. We'll, we'll dig into it since I just got this budget, the binder about 9:45.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Brettafield.
Yeah, Mayor, I want to thank you also and all your staff, all the people here to put this together. I know it's a, a lot of work and we appreciate the fact that you do it. Couple of questions. You said something when you were doing the presentation, that if the funds run out for the shelters, the homeless facilities that we've built, you said the county would have to assume more responsibility because they get funds to do this. What, can you elaborate on what you refer, I mean, I know what you're referring to, but I wanted for the record.
Sure. Yeah, we spend an enormous amount of money as a city and those dollars that we have been spending are generally what they call IRF dollars or HAP dollars from, from the state. And then we, you know, we always take advantage of federal dollars as well. But those dollars are to contract with outside providers to provide for food, counseling, people that are in there that we call house navigators, that can navigate people to a location, to help people develop a plan, how they're going to get long-term housing, case managers onsite. All of those things cost money, a lot of money. And so we've been fortunate. The state's been providing it. Now, you know, HAP, the, the, the HAP dollars from the state are, are only going to be divided across all of us, a billion dollars this year from the state. And Home Key dollars could, this could possibly be, Home Key 3 could be our last for the acquisition of, of motels. So we have to, as a city, have a exit strategy, in my opinion, for what we're doing with some of our shelters, like on Motel Drive. Certainly, we are going to be transitioning the five we own to permanent housing. That was as part of the agreement we had with the state when we accepted Home Key dollars. But until then, how do we fund those people when the HAP dollars run out? Well, we know as a city, we get $0 from the state for that. The county gets those dollars. So we really have to figure out a way to partner with them, and I restarted the discussions with, with them, Susan Holt, and about what, what can they do at those shelters until then? Well, we have these opioid settlement dollars and they allow for that. So I think it's wise for us as a city to set those sons, those funds aside when we're, when we're going to need them. And we're going to need them within the next 18 months to two years.
So we're, we're paying for what we call wraparound services, mental health.
Yeah.
Drug treatment, things that the counties paid and received state funding for. And they provide that service all the time. They have a Department of Behavioral Health, Public Health, but we're paying for some of that now.
Yeah, I will tell you that in the conversations I had yesterday at the Capitol, there, there's the MHSA, Mental Health Revisions that are being made. There are monies in there for the county that are specific for housing and so forth. So for us, at a local level, at the city level, how do we make sure that those dollars that come from the state to the, the counties make their way into the city where we have 85% of the homeless population? We, we gotta, right? I mean, we all agree, we're, we're, we've done our part.
Yep.
And we need some help.
Right. Okay, I appreciate that and I do want to congratulate everyone, staff, on the increase in the credit rating. That's a very, that's a very big deal, as we all know. And I also like the, the fact that you have pothole crews that you're forming now, which obviously we need, I can assure you in my talks with many people, that I've been coming to their homes and talking with them, that is a top priority. There, people are very frustrated with the roads and the streets and the potholes and I think forming these crews, do you know how many you're going to have?
Looks like, I think, three different crews that we're looking at, two to three crews. One of them's going to be, you know, they'll be doing the, the hot mix on the asphalt, which as, as I understand, instead of just putting asphalt into a pothole and, you know, we know how long that lasts sometimes, it is actually cutting out a section of that street and maybe there's four or five potholes and they do a hot mix asphalt. And then that, that has a significantly longer lasting period. So that's how the crews are going to be divided up and certainly Scott Moser can talk more about that when, when he comes up to, to give his presentation.
Okay. Well, I, I'm really pleased about that. And then I just wanted to comment, there, there was a comment, and, and it's a fair question about if we're hiring more police, why are we seeing the reduction in crime? And I guess I, I just have a, a different take on that. You know, when we have laws that come out of Sacramento that weaken every significant law in terms of crime, and as I think you've said and I've said, felonies are now misdemeanors, misdemeanors are now infractions, and essentially, people who commit crimes know they can get away with it and we have a revolving door where people are arrested and they're out very quickly, probably the same day. I think we can hire 2,000 police officers and as long as you have stupid laws coming out of Sacramento from stupid politicians who are pro-criminal and not pro-victim, we can hire 2,000 more police officers and there are still going to be crime. We have to deal with the laws that come out of Sacramento, which makes communities all across the state unsafe. Nobody can dispute that Prop 47, 57, AB 109, no cash bail policies make our communities unsafe. So the issue, i- issue isn't if we hire, you know, 1,000 more police, then our entire community will be safe. That's not true when you don't have laws that bring accountability for people who commit crimes. And that's, that's the big problem. We have to deal with it as an elected body locally in terms of dealing with laws that make a community unsafe. So we're doing our part. We're going to hire more police officers. We are hiring more police officers. We are giving them all the resources that they need to fight crime, but when you arrest people and they're released in hours, within hours, knowing full well when they commit those crimes, they're not going to be held accountable, it's a very difficult task to, to make a community safe. So I just, I think, you know, you need to not ignore the factor that we have to deal with what comes out of Sacramento. And we will continue to beef up our police, give them all the resources to do their part, and they do their part. They arrest the bad guys, but if you don't put them away, we see people who commit crimes 10, 20, 30 times. We see it nationally, we see it in the state. Unfortunately, we see it here in our community as well. So I think everybody needs to be aware of that. Appreciate your, your budget. Look forward to the discussions and the analysis of it. And I think at the end of the day, this council, as I've been here for the last six and a half years, does its part. You do your part, we do our part, and at the end, I think we're all pretty satisfied with what we do. Looking forward to it. Thanks.
Thank you.
City Manager, why did you wish to say a few words?
Yeah, I just wanted to talk about the process moving forward. Just a reminder to those of you who've been this before, Councilmember Perea being your first budget. So I know you're going to have a lot of questions and we're going to be happy to answer all of those, but just for the process, please, you and your staffs direct all questions to Henry in the Budget Office. We keep a master list so that we can make sure we have a system where we're not forgetting, it doesn't get stuck in my email, it doesn't get stuck in a director's email. So we have a really good system where we keep track of all of your requests for information and then we're able to distribute it and check it off our list. So if you could, you and your staffs could submit all requests for information to Henry Fero and the Budget Office, and then we will make sure and distribute the responses to those. We do it all in writing so we can keep track of it, so we have a record of it. Several of you will often submit very similar requests or the same request, so that way we're able to compile it and make sure that we're getting back to all of you with the information that you're requesting. If you would cooperate with that, we would greatly appreciate it. We can get our answers to you much quicker instead of them going directly to the departments because then the department sent it to the Budget Office and then it's just, I'm just trying to cut out and go straight to, so we can get you the information. So thank you very much for your cooperation with that.
Thank you for the reminder, City Manager. Councilmember Karbasi.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mayor, I want to thank you for this budget. I also want to thank the City Manager. It's a very professional budget. I can't imagine how much work has gone into this. This is my fourth budget and every year it just gets more and more comprehensive and professional and we are a growing city. But as we grow, I've noticed the quality of the services we provide has been improving as well and touching more people. I want to thank you especially for getting this to us early. There's a big public benefit for that. It's a dense document, giving us that extra time, makes it so much easier for us to give you that feedback. Because the reality is, as a council, we have two key functions and one of them is approving a budget. That extra time is integral for that. So just a couple of areas I'm going to be focused on, and we have met about this, but just to give a preview to you and staff as well. I'm, I'm going to be looking a lot at opportunities to grow, grow our tax base without raising taxes because if there's no, we know expenses go up, you highlighted that. And if we're not growing our ability to create, to collect property and sales tax by increasing the opportunity for folks to invest in this town, well, then that's the show. So things like efficiency and building housing supply, and I'm talking about, when I say affordable housing, not government taxpayer-funded housing, but housing that folks can, the working class can afford. You've touched a lot on that this past year. Also building commercial properties, but also ensuring other departments are cooperating with the Planning Department and getting them the resources they need so there are no bottlenecks. Issues like the future of our convention center and its ability to be a role, its role as an economic driver, which I firmly believe in. Infrastructure, again, you guys have been doing a great job on this, but continuing investments and improvements to create a smooth flow of traffic. We have Veterans Boulevard coming online, for example, and that's going to make a big difference for the west area of Fresno, but other areas as well. Especially, and you touched on this as well, but being able to ensure in areas of high interest that we are making sure that we have the investments in place so that areas around schools and parks, so that bicyclists and pedestrians are kept safe because all of us use those areas. Just to add also, one thing about law enforcement, I know we focus on law enforcement, but traffic laws are also things they enforce, too. And we've invested in the street racing team. I'm proud of the work that you and the chief are doing to get this team online, but I also am very concerned about the preponderance, or at least the perceived preponderance, of red light runners in this town. Now, there is a direct correlation and we have historic data for that. When you have more traffic units out there and there are more tickets, you're getting less fatalities of other drivers and pedestrians and bicyclists. That's, that's just, you can say common sense, but we have data to prove that. You guys did it in the early 2000s. Because when someone is, and I'm sorry to be a broken record, you know, you're texting or you're distracted and you're going 50 miles an hour, you're going over 70 feet in one second. And that's an easy opportunity to hit someone and cause a terrible accident from your bad behavior that hurts an innocent person out there. So big priority for me. Thank you for listening to that little rant on my, my tiny soapbox. The last thing is, one thing I, we, I've talked about in the past, I'm going to bring this back this year. I think with Camp Fresno, you've done a lot of great work there. I'd like to talk more about our youth and their resiliency when they face trauma. You, in your many, many years as an officer and police chief, obviously saw a lot in what happens to our kids. And I think that we have the heart, we just need to have the commitment and dollars to be able to invest and ensure. And we see those kids, especially the very young ones, that we are ensuring they're getting to those services and that they can either get proper therapy and mental health care, but also their families and those around them as well. So those are some of the things I'll be looking at. Last thing I want to say, I look at this room, this is a very small sampling of over 4,500 people, and when I tell you this, I mean it. I'm very proud of you. This is a great city. We have that small-town feel, but we have very big city problems. We're the fifth-largest city in California. Thank you sincerely for what you do. There's going to be a battle, it's going to be a lot of fun. It's an election year, too, so it's going to be even more crazy. But no, in all seriousness, thank you, Georgianne, our City Manager and Mayor. We have a lot to be proud of. I know in the end, we're going to pass a great budget, so forgive us for our drama as we move forward, but it's going to be a great process and we're going to be an even stronger city. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, guys, all of you. Appreciate it.
Before we adjourn, I'd like to request the following, probably a little bit of administration and City Clerk and Andy Heath, if he's listening. Can I get an up-to-date list of all uncompleted or not totally funded District Four infrastructure projects with Public Works? Anything that's happening in our parks, too, by next week? Anything that we might have funded for this current fiscal year that's not going to be completed? I'd like to know how far percentage-wise we are into the design or construction, how many dollars short we might be. City Clerk, I'd like to request all the motions my office has made over the last two budgets by Monday. And Andy Heath, if you're listening, I'd like a reference to page number in the Mayor's proposed budget for anything relating to eviction protection program, Zero Fair, and the senior center. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate your time.